Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Good afternoon. Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Herbert. Dr. Bustles.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Present.
And Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman.
Here.
Thank you.
Reverend McDowell, could you say the invocation, please?
Gracious and eternal Creator, we gather today to simply say thank you. Thank you for the many and manifold blessings you bestowed upon each of us. But even as we gather, we remember the employee who tragically lost his life. We pray for him, we pray for his family, and we pray for those who are so, so, so touched that through healing and through grace, that his family might feel that sensitive touch. Bless his family. Bless this city. Continue to expand it in numerous and vibrant ways. We ask it, we claim it, in your name, never hardship. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will adopt the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add item 20, Mr. Palin, Resolution Number R 2024-033, public input on closing and transfer of a portion of Evans Street in the City of Columbia to executive session, please.
That's a motion to adopt the agenda to be as with adding item 20. Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're at a point of public input. Did you have anybody sign up, Madam Clerk?
Let's see here. We have one individual signed up to speak in regards to item 23 on the agenda.
Okay.
And that would be Mr. Ronald Davis. Mr. Davis, you have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, councilmen, councilwoman, women. Certainly, the Waverly community, historic Waverly community, I've been engaging in conversation since August with Mr. Anderson and Mr. David Brewer, the traffic engineer. Upon being elected president of Historic Waverly Community, I became the voice of the community, those needs to make the community a better community. And certainly, we've identified some things that need to happen immediately. And as you see in item number 23, we are asking that the council, we have three speed humps that we very much need, as well as two four-way stop signs. And let me explain why we need that. Most importantly, Historic Waverly is a cut through. From Millwoods, cutting directly through Hampton Street, we have Allen University. There is a dormitory there. Students, there is a threat that may get hit by a car. Certainly, I've talked to their campus police officer. There needs to be a four-way stop sign there immediately. And we've engaged in conversation regarding that. Also, we have five churches of faith in Historic Waverly community. I've talked to these churches. We need speed humps on two ends of Pine Street. We have St. Luke Episcopal Church and First Calvary Baptist Church. We asked the council, and you have come through the Waverly community, and you see all of these places of worship. And certainly, we need to slow speed down. We have students speeding through and other folk coming in the community. Also, First Nazary Baptist Church, coming off Jerkway Street, we have a daycare center with the church. And certainly, we know Council McDowell lives on that street. There is a lot going on on that street. And so I ask you today if you will be so kind to just look at the proposals that we have before council, because it's of importance. Safety is very important in any community. And since I've taken over there, so I've been on phone with city administrators, managers, as well as Mr. Anderson emailing back and forth, as well as calling CPD. All the flying, you know, all the, we have so much going on. And it's very important to calm the speed down. And so that is why I'm here before you today to ask council for your approval of these items on the agenda. And certainly, I know that safety is important in everybody's community. And that is one of the tasks of me taking over as president of Historic Waverly in March. Listen to the people. And I am the voice of the people. And I've asked them to tell me their needs. And that is why I'm before you today. I got off work a little tired. But I said I'm gonna press on down here, because it's very important that I talk to you all. And I thank you so kindly for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you of those needs that we have as it relates to Allen University, the churches. They are the ones that asked me, would you be so kind to look at these matters? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is that it, Madam Clerk?
Other individuals are signed up to speak at the end of the meeting.
We now move to approval of minutes. Got a motion to approve the minutes from September 3, 2024, council meeting?
Second.
Got a motion, a second? Any changes, concerns, questions? Hearing unseen, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Brown. Dr. Bustles. Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move into presentations. Ms. Linda Johnson, would you please join us at the podium? And anyone else that you want to have with you? Thank you for being here today. The South Carolina Daughters of the American Revolution wanted to read our proclamation of Constitution Week and then allow y'all to say a few words, if you would afterwards, if you'd like to. So whereas the United States Constitution secures the blessings of liberty and justice for all Americans, September 17, 2024 marks the 200th and 37th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. It is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document. It's memorable anniversary to the patriotic celebrations which it commemorates. Excuse me. Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week. Learning about the principles of the Constitution allows us to reflect on the rights and privileges of citizenship. So therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, the mayor of City of Columbia, along with my fellow council members who do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23, 2024, to be Constitution Week. The floor is yours.
Mayor Rickaman, I'm Alice Caskey. I am the state regent, like a state president, of the Daughters of American Revolution.
Welcome, Madam President.
Thank you. We have about 4,900 members in South Carolina. And I bring you greetings and thank you. And we set aside this week because it was signed into law in 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. And we celebrate this week because the American Congress of Confederation signed it into law in September 17, 1787. So we specifically use this week to educate the public and bring them awareness of our Constitution. So thank you very much for hosting us and signing the proclamation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We'll take a photo over here. Well, as we keep continuing down this great path, we are going to step into our next proclamation declaring the 16th through 20th September Parking Services Appreciation Week, which we might have a few people here from Parking Services. So I would love for them to come with Elle and the team up to the podium, all of you, so y'all can be recognized together as a team. I mean, y'all all dressed up in your pretty shirt. We gotta make sure everybody sees you. Elle, would you like me to read the proclamation first, or would you like to speak first?
You may go first, sir.
Okay. Parking Services is an integral part of communities across the country, including the state of South Carolina, as well as the City of Columbia. Parking Service staff members deserve recognition for the jobs that they do in the field, as well as in office operations. The Columbia Parking Service Department oversees 11 parking deck facilities, 14 service lots, over 3,600 on-street parking meters, over 1,400 on-street passport parking spaces, six residential permitted areas, over 3,500 monthly parkers, nine hotels that are accommodated, an average number of meters bagged monthly, over 500 average of passport parking transactions, over 70,000, and the average of monthly parking citations is issued is over 10,000. I don't know if we celebrate parking citations. Every day assisted by facilities and support service staffs, they strive to provide quality customer service to the public for the betterment of the community. And often, their efforts go unnoticed, even after parking ordinance compliance has been accomplished due to their efforts and dedication. Parking Services increases our community's economic prosperity through meeting increased parking demands impacting local tourism, attraction, and retention of business. So therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, the mayor of the City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of Columbia City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 16 through 20, 2024, as Parking Services Appreciation Week. I want to bring up a personal comment. I had an opportunity to meet a lady this weekend as I was in one of our hospitality districts on Sunday having lunch. And somehow, somebody told her I was the mayor. And she came up to me, and she goes, I want to tell you a story. We came to town this weekend for the football weekend. Our child is here. We weren't really sure where to go and what to do with all the stuff going on. And we met somebody from Parking Services on Saturday. And they were actually on their day off, enjoying their free time. But they heard us discussing trying to understand how to navigate through Columbia during a game day and everything going on. They said they were the most professional, most caring, and most helpful person that they had ever encountered. Well, I think that's a positive reflection of who y'all all are in every aspect. And I want to thank you for that, because it takes a team to create that. And so thank you for what you do and you do every day. I know a lot of times you don't get the opportunity, we don't get the opportunity to thank you for what you do. But just want you to know that this proclamation comes with sincerity and in our deepest thank you. Elle?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, City Council members, and Mr. Palin, for a super exciting opportunity to recognize this group that stands behind me. If the leadership team could step forward for just a moment. I want to share this outstanding leadership team that drives Parking Services on a day-in, day-out basis. Standing before you is over 150 years of commitment and dedication amongst all of these individuals. In parking years, that may be 321 years. Thank you. Don Sayley once said, "A lot of people notice when you succeed, but they don't see what it takes to get there." To this group in particular, thank you for your unwavering dedication and commitment to the goals and success of our department. Your hard work, perseverance, reliability are truly commemorable. Your contributions do not go unnoticed, and we truly appreciate each of you and your leadership. Again, thank you. To the larger team, the A-team, all of these other special individuals, frontline folks who show up on rainy days, wintry, cold, snowy days, and let's not forget the famously hot days. Today, we recognize each of you for your outstanding dedication, your efforts and willingness to go the extra mile, demonstrate your commitment to excellence, your passion, patience, worth it, consistently elevate our team's performance. Again, thank you. As we all know, parking can be challenging on occasion. From the enforcement staff with their orange envelopes and folks often asking, "What is that on my windshield?" To the meter shop with reports of broken meters and endless collections for over 3,000 on-street meters. To our event staff, "Hello, I need 50 bagged meters for an event tomorrow. Oh, and you did get my email that we have a last-minute event this evening for 600 folks. Can you accommodate us?" To the office staff, "I really did pay for parking. No, no, a friend was driving my car. I thought parking was free in Columbia. No, I've lost my access card. What exactly is a vehicle registration? Why did I receive a citation for being parked in the median? I did have my flashers on." Endless requests for parking permits. Again, my personal thank you to each one of you. Tori and I both could not do what we do and represent the city without each and every one of you. Thank you. I'll close with this. How many of us sat in Ms. Stevens' 5th grade class and daydreamed about growing up? To either become a superhero or maybe working in parking? Each of you are proof that a superhero cape comes in all forms. Sometimes, they're just stylish parking attire. Thank you.
Wants to do the photograph, so we're gonna have to line up in the front here. So let's file on both sides.
Mr. Mayor, question for Elle. Of those 150 years, who has served the longest on that team?
Rodney? Tori? Tori and Rodney are 28. Calvin, how many do you have? 24? Some longevity right here.
Yeah. Thank you for your service. Thank you for your work.
Well, everyone, file around. Both, some will be standing.
Too much, or just a little?
I thought they'd say citation.
Oh, okay. All right. Ready to go to the next?
Yep. Next in our presentations is item 4, Adult Education and Family Literacy Week Proclamation. The Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman, Mayor.
More than 43 million Americans can't read or write at the most basic level, while 62.7 million lack basic math skills, as well as credentials and skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary education. Every year, 1 in 3 young adults drops out of high school. American Action Forum estimates that America is short an estimated 7.5 million private sector workers across all skill levels. Adult education programs contribute to solving these challenges by helping Americans move along the continuum in their educational journey to achieve basic skills and get prepared for career in college. Adult education programs in high schools, community colleges, and community centers offer low-cost, high-value programs that upgrade the skillset of our citizens. The City of Columbia celebrates Adult Education, Family Literacy Week, as a proud participant in the National Educate and Elevate Campaign, which helps our citizens learn about all of their adult education options to attain their personal and professional goals. So therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, the mayor of City of Columbia, along with my fellow members of council, do hereby proclaim the city's honors and recognition September 16 through 2024 is Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. More and more important, and we continue to make sure that people have opportunities in our community. And we always say Columbia is the land of opportunity. If you want an opportunity, you can find it here. And I hope you take advantage of all the opportunities we have in adult education, family literacy, our tech programs, our Hayward Career Center, and all these fine institutions and opportunities here. So I hope you'll enjoy, join me in celebrating Adult Education and Family Literacy Week.
Next up on our agenda, we ask council to give consideration for items 5 through 15.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bailey.
One amendment I'd like to make is that we remove item number 11 from the consent agenda, so I can ask the Office of Business Opportunities just a few questions.
All right, so item 11, we're gonna take the consent agenda, item 5 through 10, and 12 through 15, and then come back to item 11. So is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mayor Rickaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
So moving to...
Now, we need to go ahead and take item 11.
11.
Yep. Clint, could you maybe come forward?
Sorry to put you on the spot there, Mrs. Sheeley.
No problem, no problem.
Oh, you can't put him on the spot.
Oh, it's ready.
Ms. Driggers is here as well.
Really, my questions are probably directed mainly to Ms. Driggers. I have just some questions regarding the goal set for the CDBE program of this project. And I'm looking at it currently at 1.06% with a goal set for 7%. So wondering, is there some more resources that could help this one vendor get towards their goal? And just get some more information about why we are where we are.
Yes, so initially, they were at 0%. And we did meet with them, along with the procurement and contract staff, to see where we could increase opportunities. And they were able to increase it to the 1%. I did want to point out that there was an additional 1.67% of DBEs that cannot be counted in the CDBE total due to their location. We did get a commitment from them to continue to try to increase that participation. There are some specialized services in this project where they were unable to identify DBE to perform those services. But we will continue to work with them to increase that.
Has there been a history of anything at 0% previously?
They have had 0% previously. Now, we do require good faith efforts where they indicate how they reach out to the different vendors for the opportunities that exist. So we did review those, and those met the requirements.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Backing on Councilman Bailey's, I guess the question here is, is MBCon obviously is part of the bigger, the Water Works is saying. And I know that they've attained goals that we've seen in other projects and construction. Is the specialized something that we ought to be focused on to figure out what we could do to help grow our disadvantages businesses to fill? It seems like there's a gap here. And one of the, I think, one of our collective goals constantly has been, how do we keep growing these businesses locally, especially our disadvantaged business? And it seems like to me, if it's constantly coming up in this specialty work, how do we help somebody get into that? Is this a perfect example where we need to partner some folks together? And I guess I would say, Ms. Driggers, maybe that's something we ought to target.
Yes, absolutely. And what we'll do is we'll continue to talk to MBCon about this type of project and what the needs they are that are not being fulfilled with our DBE community and see how we can specifically build that capacity.
I think that would be great for the future. Obviously, I know that they participate very well with us in other instances. But it seems this specialty work in the water, we need to focus on. I think this is an opportunity for us.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bailey?
11, since we had extensive discussion. For the record, item 11, council is asked to approve a new contract for Project WM4543, Lake Murray Water Treatment Plant Taste and Odor Treatment System, as requested by Columbia Water on May 25, 2023. Award to MBCon Waterworks LLC in an amount not to exceed $3,951,025, which includes contingency. The initial term of the contract will take effect upon issuance of the notice to proceed with an end date 360 days from commencement. The contractor is located in Columbia.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Dr. Bustles? Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Up next, we have public hearing and first reading for zoning and planning matters. That'll be Ms. Krista Hampton.
Good evening. Short one this evening. First item on the agenda is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 1425 and 1430 Laburnum Drive. It's a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban core residential small lot, and a zoning residential, single-family, small lot for the pending annexation.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this annexation?
No one has signed up.
Any, any questions from council?
Will?
Is there a motion to approve?
Got a motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Brown? Dr. Bustles? Mr. Brennan? Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Next item, number 17, is an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to include 207 Watery Avenue as a Type 2 landmark.
Which house is that?
Yeah, I don't have an image. It's a two-story. And so what's interesting about this house is that it was designed by an early female architect.
Isn't that to what Murray, where Murray used to live? Where Bill Nels lives now? Okay. Other way? Okay.
So it's designed by an early Columbia female architect, who did a number of plans, plan books, that were used around the southeast.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to include 207 Watery? Hearing none, seeing none?
Ms. Hampton, is this a historic overlay district? I believe it is, right?
It is. So what this does is it takes it up a notch to an individual landmark status, but it is already in a historic district.
So renovation, construction has to go the full historic national preservation levels, or?
Well, to the City of Columbia's levels. So if they do apply for any national registers such as tax credits, then they would go through the State Historic Preservation Office.
So just in general terms, for residents that are looking to do this in historic overlay districts, what is the, what's the advantage as a resident for doing this? Is there a financial incentive?
Being in a local district already brings with it the Bailey Bill. So it really is just an extra level of protection and actually kind of honor for the structure.
So for future owners, have to live within the guide rails of this landmark?
Yes.
So this makes sure it's not going anywhere anytime soon?
Correct, we hope it wouldn't.
All right, perfect. Motion to approve.
That also has to be disclosed, right? The sale.
So there is now largely, well, actually solely due to the efforts of our staff, they got the form, the disclosure form changed on the state level to require that.
Thank you. We got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Brown?
Dr. Bustles? Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Concludes your zoning public hearing, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have resolutions. Our first resolution is item 18, Resolution Number R2024-064, Policy and Procedures for Proclamations and Keys to the City.
Motion to approve.
We got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, read the roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 19 is an event resolution, Number R2024-077, Authorizing Consumption of Beer, Wine, and Liquor at Vista Lights Annual Holiday Festival on Thursday, November 21, 2024.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk, read the roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown? Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing public input on road closure. Is item 20, Resolution Number R2024-033, Public Input on Closing and Transfer of a Portion of Evans Street in the City of Columbia.
Do we not move that?
Did we move that to?
Moved.
Move to executive.
No, we added it, I thought.
No, there was a motion to get it.
You wanted to take action?
Yes, approve the resolution, open up the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then you'll also talk about the item in executive session.
Okay.
So we don't have to vote?
Because it's a resolution, I prefer a vote, but it's not mandatory. You're not approving the closure of the street, but you are approving the fact that a public hearing was held.
All right, so I'll take a motion, and then we'll open up for public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
What is the motion?
If we do that, why have we got this on executive session?
TK will speak to that.
This is why is it on executive session?
The resolution is to open up for a public hearing. It goes to executive session to get council's desire, how they want to handle it when it hits the court. Council can be in favor of it, be neutral of it, can oppose it. But that's a legal matter that's discussed in executive session. This is a chance just for the public to give you, speak to you all before you make that decision.
TK, this is a legal matter pursuant to what's taking place in executive session? Or what? I'm trying to understand.
In order to have a road closing, you have to have public input. And this, the resolution is just to allow the public to give their input.
She has to discuss with us the legal procedure that we take the next step.
Which is separate and apart. There's no legal actions been filed yet.
Say again?
The legal action has not been filed yet.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution opening public input on closing the street.
Second.
A motion and a second, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Brown? Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. McDowell? Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you. Well, no one has signed up to speak, but we do need to open the public hearing.
So is there anyone who wants to speak for or against this item? Did you want to speak for or against the item? Evans Street? Okay. Hearing not, seeing none. Madam Clerk, I guess we'll close the public hearing?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, item 21. Council is asked to endorse the SCDOT Plan for Intersection Upgrades at Rosewood Drive and South Walker Street, as requested by the Public Works Department.
Move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, and excitingly, we'd like to move this item forward. So please call the roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Item 22, Council is asked to approve the installation of three four-way stops, one three-way stop in a neighborhood 25 mile per hour speed limit in Cotton Town, as requested.
Move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Now, motion and a second, and we'd like to move this one along as well. Please read the roll, please.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 23, Council is asked to approve the installation of three speed humps and two four-way stops in the historic Waverly neighborhood, as requested by the Public Works Department.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, we want to move this along. Well, I will comment, Mr. President, I'm glad the neighborhood came together. This has been before us before, not everybody was on the same stage. So congratulations, you pulled it through. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, we have City Council Community Referrals, Reports, and New Business.
Is there anyone who has any referrals or reports? Yeah. So we want to bring forth that, that we bring to council at the next available time, the legislative slate that we have put together for council's review and approval. We'll look to do that. It may be hard to get it to October 1st, but I think, Madam Clerk, we talked about trying to get it done in October, correct?
That's correct.
So if we can find a date for that, that would be preferable.
Yes, sir.
And then we also like to add traffic cams to executive session at the first available meeting in October as well.
Legislative?
Traffic cams.
Yeah.
Just executive session.
To all of session, all of council.
Full session, full council, council of the whole. And that's my motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Any other referrals or reports this time? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we'll go to public input.
All right, at this time, we have three individuals signed up to speak. First, we will call Ms. Elizabeth Jones. We remind all speakers that they have a three-minute time limit. Okay. Next, we have Mr. Wade Fulmer, who we will remind Mr. Fulmer that he has three minutes.
He did, she did.
Sorry. I've been coming since last October. And this is about the animal control nonenforcement of code. It is now three years since the first reported code nuisance parking. Now a year since October, since I've been coming before council and management and legal. There have been no answers to the presented questions regarding the system and nonenforcement of code. And the nuisance barkings are continuing. I don't know that you get to read every email, but I send you something every council meeting, and I try to update and recap. And I added three again on Tuesday. Now, I know, I'm getting away from what I wanted to say here. I know that somebody's doing something because there's always that short period of quiet. It's like you can hear a pin drop next door. But nobody has communicated with me directly since last October. I didn't meet one time with Mr. Shealy and with Mr. Anderson, and things were going to be looked into, I never heard anything. All these months, when I wake up in the middle of the night, four o'clock times, six o'clock times, whatever times, and I have to go out in the dark with the bugs and try to get a video, or at least record the time is when it happens. So three more times, June the 26th, because there'd been an increase again, I sent an email to everybody, meaning Ms. Thee and Ms. Wilson, and all of you. And it got quiet the next couple of days. And then on Saturday, three days later, the neighbor of the owner of the dog across the street diagonally, that I didn't even know who it was, she's sending me an email about, and complaining about the fact that I have contacted and reported all these instances. And she takes it further, and she says, "I'm afraid to be in the community with you over there." I don't even know her, except when I've seen her on the street with her boyfriend, walking the dog. Don't even know her. But something got done that time, June 26th. And then by Saturday, she did stay over the night before. By Saturday, she sent me that derogatory email, insinuating, bad choice of words, "I'm going to shoot you" in the email. And also said that she felt uncomfortable with me being in the community. And I've never reported on her or anything. So it's just snowballed. For three years, it's snowballed. And nobody's contacted me since last October directly to say what was happening. But I know when I send my emails, and there's been an influx again, and there's been an escalation, somebody is saying something because you can hear that pin drop. But it comes back. It's the routine, it's the pattern. It's when school starts, it's when the work schedule changes, it's when there are holidays. And I don't know exactly when it's coming, but it's been three years. And again, I have to get up in the middle of the night so that I don't forget the time, put it on my calendar so that I can write it up the next day, get outside. And by the time I get outside, the dog starts barking. It's the same problem. The dog is in the backyard, it's got a dog door. It's been the problem for three years. They just leave it out in the dark. So if I might get back to what I wanted to say here.
Your time has lapsed.
I want to say it a little bit more. It's been three years, and I get three minutes, and I haven't seen you in the months that you've been out at the other place. And the one that I, time that I tried to go out there, I had car trouble. So I will do this quickly. The nuisance barkings are continuing. Why, no communication. This has been going on since September of '21. And I had the good meeting with the police department in August of '22 because it had escalated to include not only the dog barking after midnight, but the abusive profanity being directed at me in the middle of the night because I reported the incidents. Three years we're talking about here. The police department were helpful, as I've said before. I'm getting through it very quickly here. And in January of '23, December '22, January '23, it escalated again. That's the night that I'd had four biopsies. You were here to hear that the first time. Four biopsies at the BA that week. And I went to bed early on Saturday night, and I had to listen to dog barking from 11 o'clock at night till 3:00 in the morning on Sunday. And because Columbia Police Department came out and did a body cam, their influence, after 17 months, got Animal Control to write a ticket for the first time. And that went nowhere because Animal Control did not turn over the evidence to legal. So I'm finishing right.
It went to court, correct, Mr. Kaufman? It went to court, right?
I'm sorry?
It went to court. It didn't go nowhere, it went to court, correct?
It went to court and a jury trial. And during the jury trial, I'm glad you're asking, thank you. During the jury trial, it took us from February, the writing of the ticket, to the end of October to actually get the trial. All that time, legal, the information turned over, which was so important to, the information that Animal Control had that was given to them by Columbia Police Department, that was so important, was not given to legal. The first thing at the jury trial that was said was that, and the legal person for the city said, "Well, the information's not here, the police officer's not here." And the court had already given two continuances. It was a farted defense thing all the way through. So yes, it went to court. The evidence was not there. This has been one of my main points as far as the system. Animal Control didn't want a ticket. I still don't know, because of those system problems, questions that I've had and gotten no answers, I have gotten no answers. I still want to know what happened. I still want to know what happened. And I want to know why I had to add three more barkings, early morning barkings, this past week. I don't know who to talk to. Nobody's talking to me. I said to you after the second meeting, I think it was, "I don't feel like I can trust anybody because I see what's going on. They don't want to enforce." So I'll close.
Wrap it up, Mr.?
Division of Animal Control ticketed by the Columbia Police Department body cam. Many times after that, even during the period between the, when the ticket was issued and when we finally got to the jury trial in October, there were two more barkings in the morning. Columbia Police Department came out and did the job. Did, did a body cam, did the reports. And what did Animal Control do? Nothing. After, and it went for two years, and now it's been three years because of the years that I've been speaking to you all. I don't know what to do. I want somebody to tell me something. I'm sounding angry because I am angry. I'm not usually angry when I come in. But I'm still listening to this after three years. Mr. Anderson, I've asked for a meeting with anybody and everybody to tell me what's going on. Tell me something's going on. Tell me at least what you're doing because somebody's doing something. I know that. I don't know who it is. Mr. Anderson and Mr. Shealy, I know they're very busy with the responsibilities that they have and priorities. I'll tell you that my health as a veteran and anybody else's residence that's not, that's having to listen to dogs in the middle of the night and to bartenders come home on the weekend or whatever night and make that additional noise. And for me to be 74, and this started, 70, I started, this started when I was 73. For me to be 73 and have to listen to you, to F you, Mr. Fulmer. F you, no, F you, Wade. F you, F you. To listen to that, that point is when I called the police department. I said, "I need to have a sit-down." We had that sit-down. It was very productive, but Animal Control did not follow through again. I don't, you know, I believe in, so where I am right now, nobody's going to give me an answer today. And they can give me an answer in three years. They haven't given me an answer in the one year since I've been coming to see you. But I believe in what, I believe in what Martin Luther King said, "The truth will set you free." Also believe in what Billy Graham said is, "Witness publicly." I don't know what I've got to do, but if I'm forced to go to this, this is all so unnecessary. Three years, and they know what's happening? You don't know, I understand that you don't know all the details, and you don't know, see every email and all that kinds of thing. But I'm telling you now that it's three. We reached three years. We've, I've been here for a year. And whoever's supposed to be doing what they're supposed to be doing to get this straight and stop the barking is not. There's a combination of.
You, we've got a.
Yeah.
We've given you exceedingly time to speak. At every meeting you've come to, we gave you a whole nother five minutes here.
Okay.
We have other people signed up that want to speak. So let's wrap it up in the next 15 seconds, please.
So what can you tell me? I will sit down. What can you tell me? Do I go another three years and not hear anything? Another year and not hear anything? Who's going to respond? When I first came, Mr. McDowell referred me correctly to Mr. Anderson. I later got referred to Mr. Shealy, and it's still happening. So I want to hear something. I want to talk to somebody. And I don't want, oh, yeah, we're going to look in it and get back to you. That happened last October. That happened this past February, and nothing. There are more questions to be asked.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. Thank you.
There are more questions to be asked simply because this has gone on so long. And I'm going to ask those questions, and we're going to get to the bottom of it. If nobody else can get the answers, I assure you I can with my background investigations. And I'm going to do it, yes.
I'm going to request that you leave.
I will leave.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will be back. If we can't get something done, I'm going to go public. I don't want to do that. Okay.
Has that been any conversation with your neighbors?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we have Mr. Dwayne Arden signed up to speak.
Your honors, how are you doing?
Good. Good to see you.
My name is Dwayne Arden. It has been a privilege to operate a taxi cab in the city of this great, in this great city for 44 years. I just want to say that I was born two blocks away. I'm going to cut this really, really short. The reason why I'm here is because of this right here. And I have talked to Mr. Brennan. He has allowed me the pleasure of his time. This is a city of Columbia chauffeur's license. There are less than 80 taxi cab drivers in the city of Columbia right now. Half of them don't even operate in the city of Columbia anymore because the ride shares are pretty much taken over. I understand the economics of transportation. I understand the ride shares. The ride shares do not have to have anything like this. This right here is called a City of Columbia Renewal Packet. It contains nine items. Physical, drug five panel drug test, tuberculosis test, eyesight, hospitality class, which I went to that, and I knew more about the hospitality of this great city than the guy that was running the actual hospitality class. So basically, a sled report, a DMV driver's license. Basically, what I want is the same equality that the ride shares have for taxi cab drivers. That's what I want. That's what I implore to you. That's what, you know, there was other drivers I talked to about coming up here. They said, "They don't want to come. It's a waste of our time." I have faith in city council. I have been suing this for three years with Steve Benjamin, Howard DeVal. Honorable Will Brennan, yourself. I think I've sent you a couple of emails. Basically, what I want to do is take this and throw it in the trash right now because it's obsolete. It does not serve a purpose compared to the 80 cab drivers that we have left and any good, given time, depending on the event, the 3,000 to 4,000 ride shares that we have operated in the city, which have nothing at all like this. So I'm just implore you for an alternative. Plus the fact that it costs $300 for me to get this. And that's basically what I've been saying all along. I mean, there's got to be a simpler solution.
I think you make a lot of sense. I think, you know, there's been a lot of discussions about a lot of different ways that people are being ferried through our city lately. I do think that it's time we take this to committee. I'm just sitting here wondering if it should go to public safety or should go to administrative. Administrative, because I think it's time for us to have a conversation as well as council about, we've got some issues with golf carts doing the same thing and other things. And I think it's time for us to have an overall discussion about how we move forward based on where we are today because circumstances are a lot different when it was a medallion system way back when. And so with that, I would make a motion that we refer any taxiing vehicles to our administrative.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I do think it may be relevant to look at just the overall climate of what is done to the city as a whole. If you look at Blue Ribbon Cab Service, historic black-owned cab company that is struggling to remain in existence due to Uber and Lyft and overwhelming demand on the market. And so I do think it's more than just administrative and policy, but looking at just what the ride share and regulating taxi drivers doing to the climate as a whole.
I think that's what we're trying to head to is figuring out what the best way is to levelize the playing field so that, because you can't delete your competition. You got to adapt and do everything else. But I think your point is saying is, why pay $300? Why go through that? Is there a better way for us to register and work with you all that keeps you at the same, that's just one less added cost that you have to deal with? So I would say is that we take the overall discussion to the admin committee to look at how do we deal with this comprehensively? And then from there, look at what we can do to ensure that if you want to be taxi driver, a chauffeur, or whatever, that you have an opportunity in the community to continue your business. So with that, I want to make a motion we refer this to admin committee. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mayor, I just wanted to note that this matter is already sitting in the Public Safety Committee. So would the issue with public safety be absolved at this point and transferred over to administrative policy?
When was it referred to, Public Safety?
Several months ago.
I've been doing this.
It did not take into account the mention of the golf cart. So if it needs to land in administrative, I'd gladly transfer it to you.
I think so, too.
Okay. I just wanted to put that on record.
We just added on a layer about the golf cart use that has been in the conversations lately. The mayor's asking in his requests to talk about that as well.
All right. Just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.